Good morning and we're live. Thank you so much for joining us for the Screen New South Wales Covid Town Hall meeting. Well, Town Hall in inverted commas because obviously it's a webinar. I recognised a lot of names in the RSVP list, but for those of you who don't know me, my name is Gronya Brunston and I'm the Head of Screen New South Wales. I'd like to start this morning by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land in which we meet and work this morning, and for me that's the Wongal people of the Eora Nation, who are the traditional custodians of the lands along the southern shore of the Parramatta River. I'd like to extend that respect to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with us here today or watching this recording after it's gone live. I'm joined today by Dr Laura Colley. Dr Colley is a public health physician within the Ministry of Health, and she's been assisting with operational policy aspect of the Covid-19 response for the New South Wales Government. We're also joined by Danny Kilpatrick, Manager Health and Return to Work from Safe Work New South Wales. Before we get started, I'll just run through a bit of housekeeping. While I do that, I'd invite you all to have a look at the chat function on the right-hand side of your screen. Get to know each other, introduce yourself, tell us where you're watching from, and that way we can all get to know each other a bit better. Meanwhile, I'll just continue with a bit of housekeeping. The webinar has live captioning, which is provided for us today by AI Media. To access this, you'll see a link directly below the video that says click here for live captioning. The webinar is being recorded and will be available for playback at any time once this live session is over. You can access the playback at the same link that you used to join the webinar this morning. Crowdcast, which is the platform we're using this morning, is best viewed through the Chrome platform, through Chrome browser. So if you're having any troubles seeing or hearing me, try switching to Google Chrome. The chat function is available for you to chat to each other, and my colleague Amelia from Screen New South Wales is also in the chat room, and she'll be providing handy links throughout the talk, directing you to some of the resources that might be online that we're discussing this morning. I won't monitor the chat quite as much, but if you'd like to ask us a question, and that's if you'd like to ask me or Danny or Laura a question, pop it into the chat box. There's a little screen that's also called Ask a Question. I'll type your question into this box and I'll check that section as we go through and make sure that I can ask Laura and Danny any questions that come up. If you see a question that you also would like answered, you can vote for it. So it can go to the top of the list and it's more likely to get asked. If we don't get around to all the questions, or if you think of something that, after we've finished the webinar and you should have asked, get in touch with us and we'll do everything we can to get those questions answered for you. So Screen New South Wales, this is our sixth webinar over the last couple of months, the Screen Connect series, and we're busy putting together more webinars, more panels, and more discussions with other fantastic speakers and guests, and we'll be announcing those over coming weeks. If there's a topic that you'd like to see a webinar on or that you think would be worth discussing, please also put that in the chat box and we'll try and coordinate something around that. To stay informed, sign up to our e-newsletter, follow us on our socials, and then you can find out when things are happening. Some of the things that we're doing over these few months, we're doing a number of things. Screen Connect is one, where you can have a one-on-one meeting with one of our Screen Investment Managers. You can come and have a meeting with me if that's helpful. Get in touch with us, let us know, you can make an appointment and we can do a one-to-one Zoom. We can meet in person now, it's a bit more open, but probably by a video conference is probably easiest. We've got a slate development programme that we're running as well, which is for people who have got a slate of three or more projects that they want to apply for up to $100,000 for development. And that's a rolling fund, you can apply at any time. Now that it'll be really into the new financial year, because we've closed our books, like many businesses now, for this financial year to close everything off by the 30th of June, but that programme will roll into the next financial year as well. The screen production industry here in Australia, like a number of territories around the world, has released some Covid safe guidelines to help get the industry back to work and to help inform really what a Covid protocol plan for your production might look like. The guidelines have been developed by the Australian Screen Sector Task Force, and led by AFTAS, the Australian Film, TV and Radio School, and also joined by all the state and federal screen agencies, SPA, MIA, the guilds, broadcasters and a number of major production companies. They've been drafted in consultation with the Commonwealth Department of Health and global law firm Clyde and Co. And responding obviously to Covid-19, every production will need to draw up its own Covid safe protocols that respond to its own specific set of circumstances. But these are a good line, a good guide really, to help you think about what should be included in those protocols. There are live documents, so as public health orders change, as our situation changes over coming months, they'll be updated. So while you might download the PDF of the document now, don't forget to check back in. It will be kept live on the Screen Australia website. If you've got any problem finding that, we can help you to find that. There will also be a Covid safe risk assessment template that's currently being developed, and that'll be made available on the Screen Australia website too. So now we'll join our guests. I think first we've got Dr Laura Colley, and she's going to talk through some of the public health orders and some of the things you might need to consider as we start to get back to work. Thanks Laura, over to you.
Thanks. So thanks for dialing in today. What I'm going to talk about is just generally getting back to work and our recommendations around developing a safety plan for each workplace that really looks at the specific risks associated with that workplace and things that they can do to make them safer for everyone as we get back into work. So essentially, with under the public health orders, workplaces are considered essential gatherings, which means that they are exempt from any restriction on gatherings. So that includes the gatherings of 20 people, the indoors gathering of 100 and the outdoors gathering of 500. Workplaces are exempt from all of these restrictions as they are considered essential gatherings. What we've created with Safe Work, working together quite closely, is a number of Covid-19 safety plans for a range of industries. And there's also a general one up there as well. So they're all available now on the New South Wales Government websites. And they're there to really help you develop your Covid safety plan for your specific workplace and giving you some ideas of things to think about. They're all very similar because they're all the same sort of risks at a workplace. So I might just talk through these general principles and things to think about and then answer any questions if people have them that might be something a bit more specific to the industry and their workplace. So all of our safety plans follow four key areas of consideration. First one is around wellbeing of staff and customers or anyone else coming into the workplace. The second grouping is around the physical distancing and how that can be supported. Third is around hygiene and cleaning and how to enhance those protocols and procedures. And then the last one is around record keeping and what we're hoping that workplaces can help us with in the event that there is a Covid-19 case in the workplace to help with the contact tracing that we need to do. So I'll start with wellbeing of staff and other people on the workplace. And the main thing here, and probably the most key thing to be doing, is excluding anyone from the workplace that has symptoms or is unwell. So just making sure that they're aware that they should not be coming into work if they're unwell and to stay home and if they have any symptoms of Covid-19, encouraging them to go and get tested. We also encourage workplaces to provide their staff with information and training on Covid-19, and this is really helping them understand when to get tested. And there's a lot of information on this on the New South Wales Health website. And then some information around physical distancing and the hygiene and cleaning protocols that you're going to put in place across the workplace, just so they're aware of what they need to do. It's a good idea to make staff aware of their leave entitlements or anything that you have in place in case they do get sick or required to get tested and isolate. So this is again another way to encourage and make sure that your staff do not come to the workplace when they are unwell. So those are really the key things around wellbeing of staff. There's other things to consider as well, so if they need any extra mental health support. And again, there's a lot of extra resources on the New South Wales website around how to provide this extra support. Then looking at physical distancing. So there are some businesses that do have restrictions in place. So that's things like pubs and restaurants. All of that information is online for those particular businesses that have restrictions. All other businesses do not have the same restrictions in place, but they are expected to have protocols in place to make the workplace Covid safe for their employees and anyone that visits. So things that you can think about are assigning workers to a specific station. So for a film set, this might be having the people who film a certain scene there all together, but they don't mix with the extras or anyone from other scenes wherever possible. So what you're really trying to do here is limit the amount of interactions that people have. Because if you do have someone on the film set who becomes a Covid case, the number of people they come into contact with would need to self-isolate. So you're really decreasing the spread that it will have across your workplace, but also the impact that that would have on your ability to continue working too. So just having a look at sort of meal breaks or breaks in filming or anything where a lot of people might be co-mingling and trying to decrease that amount of interaction that's happening. And that'll just help make sure that you're really risk managing any impact to your workplace and also protecting your staff too. So things that you can put in place to minimise that interaction between lots of different people within the workplace. So you're having plans in place to really monitor how many people are on site and how they're moving around and identify if there's any problem areas that you need to look at. Using flexible working arrangements where possible, so not having people come on set if they don't need to be there. If there's things they can do remotely, then again, that's going to decrease the amount of interactions that people are having. Where reasonable practical keeps staff 1.5 metres away, so understanding that there's some things that that's not practical for, but where it is, just really making sure that people are keeping that safe distance so that they're less at risk of catching a respiratory disease through any droplets or coughing or sneezing. For any meetings, using options like this, so telephone or video options or things, just to try and again decrease those interactions between people. But this might not always be practical, but where it is, something like this is a much better way of people communicating with each other without increasing the risk. And putting signs near places where people might crowd, so going into a lift, people might crowd in together. So just reminding them to keep 1.5 metres apart wherever possible as they move around the work site is also useful. If staff or workers need to travel together in a vehicle, so if there's a car or a minivan driving them around, just thinking about having the windows open, trying to separate people as much as possible in there. Yeah, so anything around, just sort of try and keep them a bit more spaced out and limiting the time that they spend in the vehicle where possible. And then thinking about just outside the workplace as well. So making sure people aren't crowding out there whilst they're waiting to come in or sitting around in groups afterwards. So just trying to encourage anything around that workplace to not do too much crowding and intermingling. Those are really the key principles about physical distancing. So every workplace is going to be different and what is practical and isn't practical within a workplace is not the same. So it's just having a look at how people move around your workplace and how you could set things up to try and decrease those face-to-face interactions between people and the number of face-to-face interactions that they have. And hygiene and cleaning. So we recommend providing hand sanitizer at multiple locations across the site. So we know that people touch things a lot and this coronavirus sits around on surfaces quite a few hours in certain conditions, and people touch their faces a lot. So just having hand sanitizer around to really encourage people to constantly clean their hands is useful. And providing disinfectant and detergent sort of surface wipes to be available to wipe down any sort of camera crew or any equipment that needs to be cleaned. So doing that between people using it, so that it's wiping off the coronavirus of any of those surfaces. Ensuring your bathrooms have hand soap and are well-stocked and have either paper towels or a hand dryer there available as well so that people are able to clean their hands properly. It's a good idea to have posters up as well to remind people that it takes about 20 to 30 seconds to clean your hands properly so that they're doing that too. Workplaces should try and clean any frequently used areas at least daily. So this is where it's practical. So things like hard indoor floor surfaces, wiping those, cleaning those with a detergent, disinfectant solution once a day. But if there's any other areas that people touch frequently, so handrails, doorknobs, anything like that, just cleaning them a few times a day with again a disinfectant detergent wipe or something similar. Making sure your disinfectant solutions are at an appropriate strength so that you're not diluting them out so that they're not working and you're just using water. So just checking on that as well. And it's a good idea to get your staff to wear any gloves when cleaning or wash their hands before and after too. So those are the basic principles of increasing the hygiene and cleaning around the workplace. But just having a look again at the workplace and where people touch things a lot that could use increased wiping down throughout the day. And the last one we have is record keeping. So where possible, it's really useful if workplaces know who was on site on which days. Because again, if there is a case, we need to find who they were in contact with and who's at risk and make sure that we isolate them so it doesn't continue to spread. So if there is a case that gets notified, you will get called by New South Wales Health to let you know and to work with you and give you a plan for who needs to isolate, what needs to be done, what needs to be cleaned. So we will talk you through what happens if you do have a case associated. But it's very useful for us if you're able to tell us exactly who was in contact with that person and we'll be able to find out what days they were there during their infectious period and really help make sure that everyone in your workplace is assessed properly and given the correct advice. It's a good idea to make your staff aware of the Covid Safe app. Again, you can't force anyone to download it under the legislation, but just letting them know that that's another useful tool for us to be able to use to do the contact tracing piece in the event that there is someone in your workplace that comes back positive. And noting that you also have the requirement to notify Safe Work if you have a person tested positive for Covid in your workplace too. So those are the general requirements for record keeping, and that's really the things we want you to think about when you develop your safety plan and get back to work in as safe a way as possible. So I might leave it there and answer any questions anyone has about their workplace or anything that needs clarification.
Hi Laura, we have had a question come in from Gordon who asks, is the practice of implementing PPE acceptable when working closer than 1.5 metres to each other?
Yeah, look, it's not generally recommended that you need to put that on in countries that have lower rates of community transmission, which Australia does have at the moment. But it's up to people to make sure that they're comfortable and can make their own decisions too. So if it makes them more comfortable having PPE on in those closer working environments, then that's fine. But it's not a requirement that we're putting in place because we don't think it's feasible to expect everyone to do that all the time.
Thanks Laura. Any other questions from anybody this morning for Laura? Not so far. Thank you so much for that Laura. We might go to Danny for, he's got a presentation for us, and then we'll see if we've got any more questions as we come back. If you think of any questions for Laura while you're listening to Danny, please put them into the questions box and we'll make sure that we get some responses from Laura. Thanks Danny, over to you.
Thank you Gronya and good morning everybody. First of all, just want to thank Screen New South Wales for the opportunity of coming to speak to the group this morning. We've certainly been very busy in this period, like many of the regulators across New South Wales and across Australia. And as Laura mentioned, we've worked quite closely with New South Wales Health throughout this Covid-19 pandemic. So a lot of my information, which I'll go through on the slides, I might not dwell too much on the slides because some of the information Laura's already covered and I'm keen to give people the opportunity to ask specific questions that more relates to safety or to Safe Work in New South Wales. But what I thought it might be helpful to do, and just bear with me and hopefully everyone's got the slides up in front of them now. So just a quick introduction. So as Gronya mentioned, so my name's Danny Kilpatrick. So I'm the manager for one of our specialist areas within Safe Work. And that specialty area is around health and also matters about injury management and injury prevention. So workers' compensation as well. We do some work on behalf of CIRA in that space, who's the State Insurance Regulatory Authority. And my area of expertise is around health matters, so particularly around zoonotic diseases. So for those who know a little bit more about Covid, largely zoonotic is a disease or a virus that's transmitted from animals to humans. So that's one of the areas that we cover in Safe Work that sits out of my team. So just very broadly, for those that might not know us or might not have heard the name before, so we are obviously a government department. So back in 2015 or prior to 2015, we were known as WorkCover. So in 2015, we split off into three entities. One being Safe Work New South Wales, who's the workplace health and safety regulator in New South Wales. Then you've got CIRA that I mentioned, the State Insurance Regulatory Authority that looks after the workers' compensation side of things, as well as CTP and home building insurance. And then you've got ICare, who in New South Wales is actually the, what we call a non-insurer for workers' compensation. So that split largely was to get those three entities to separate. And now we're known as Safe Work New South Wales from a health and safety point of view. So what we obviously do is provide advice on improving work health and safety. So we provide licences and registration. So potentially you might come across that in some of your work in your industry. But things like forklifts or what we call higher work licences, you know, working in confined spaces, electrical work, things like that. One of our key areas is obviously when unfortunately when things do go wrong, if there is a workplace incident that's, you know, serious or otherwise, we're there to enforce any work health and safety laws in New South Wales just to obviously hold, you know, individuals and businesses accountable when things do go wrong. One of our, obviously our big pieces of work, obviously outside of the investigation space is around injury prevention. And that leads, and some of you may or may not be aware, that in, back in 2016, we launched what we called the Work Health and Safety Roadmap for New South Wales 2022. All this information was on our website for those that might want to have a look a bit further. So that roadmap was a six-year plan that we put in place to make the lives of workers and business healthier, safer and more productive. So it aimed to protect workers from harm, reduce unnecessarily compliance costs and secure safety standards in New South Wales workplaces. So it's aimed at everyone to enable a continued reduction in fatalities and serious injuries and illnesses in New South Wales. And it sets out the agreed priorities to keep safety simple while focusing on important risks that will reduce harm. So as I said, one of the big pieces of work that we do outside of obviously investigation space is events exactly like we're doing today. So more educative and capability building. So people are aware of their responsibilities under the work health and safety legislation and what they can do to make sure everyone is safe and well in the workplace. So Laura did a great job in terms of explaining some of the backgrounds, obviously particularly around Covid. And from our perspective, what we realise as Safe Work, and most people would be aware that there are risks associated with work regardless of what that work is and they might be different in different circumstances. But obviously what's interesting to do with Covid is obviously that Covid is a risk that could potentially impact any workplace. So if you keep in mind the principles for risks in New South Wales and across Australia, is that the health and safety regulators just expect businesses to what we term what's reasonably practicable. So those that might have a background in work health and safety would be familiar with that term. So really from our perspective, that businesses just must manage the risk of exposure to Covid-19 to workers and others at their workplace. So far, that is reasonably practicable. Covid's a little bit different insofar as obviously we've got the public health orders, which have come down from New South Wales Health. So New South Wales Health is and remains, or as will, the lead agency for any public health process that we have. And Safe Work's really there to make sure workplaces are doing the right thing in terms of what's reasonably practicable. So one of the questions that we frequently get is, you know, with a public health order in place, you know, what does Safe Work do about that? So we've certainly fielded thousands of inquiries in the last few months, but we don't necessarily have powers to enforce public health orders. Having said that, we expect businesses to do what, as I said, what's reasonably practicable. We know what we can do to control the risk of Covid-19, and that's what we expect for this. What we did do, and I don't have a slide on this, it's available on our website, but what we did release very early on in the piece from Safe Work was what we called a statement of regulatory intent regarding Covid-19. And basically what that means is that we've said that Safe Work will apply a reasonable and proportionate response to compliance, including a business's ability to meet its WHS duties due to the constraints associated with the pandemic. So Safe Work would generally take a supportive and educative approach to compliance with these requirements during this time, provided that duty holders, and duty holders is obviously the business or what we call the person conducting the business or undertaking in the offices of that business. As long as they've provided and made a genuine attempt to comply with the requirements, we understand that some of those factors are outside of their control. We obviously do have the reserve the right to vary its approach as appropriate in some circumstances, particularly in cases where there's a significant safety risk to the workers or to the community. So obviously we still need to do our business as usual event, so that is investigating, not related necessarily to Covid, but serious injuries or unfortunately fatalities that happen all too often. We do respond to those to make sure that obviously that we still do our requirements that we have in place as a regulator. So really that takeaway message around Covid and the risk of Covid is that businesses must take action to bear and manage that risk of exposure to Covid like they would any other risk that might be apparent to their business. I won't spend too much time on the next slide. As I mentioned before, there's public health orders that are in place. They're changing rapidly, so what we're obviously encouraging businesses to do is to keep across the latest public health orders as those restrictions gradually start to come off as the numbers remain low. And as I said before, under the WH, the main thing is that under WHS laws, employers must do everything that's reasonably practicable to eliminate that risk of a worker contracting Covid-19 at the workplace. So what that really means in practical terms, and again Laura touched on this a lot a bit, and thinking more specifically about the film industry and the sorts of situations where your workplaces might be involved. The really the key things is that there's physical distancing requirements between the workers, customers and members of the public, so making sure there is a distance in place. So businesses must ensure that they provide suitable amenities to control that risk. So when we talk about amenities, the risk of exposure, so regular cleaning and thorough cleaning and disinfecting of high-touch surfaces. And where there is, and it sort of leads back to that earlier question about the use of PPE and face masks in particular. From a WHS perspective, those that are familiar with the hierarchy of controls, PPE is the lowest level of control that you can have. So obviously we can't yet eliminate Covid while we don't have obviously a vaccine, so we can't eliminate it. But what we can do is you can use those other controls like physical distancing, environment, training of the workforce, and PPE is that very bottom level of control of how you control a risk. So that physical distancing is obviously important, but we understand, like many other workplaces, that it's not always reasonable or even possible to do that in a filming situation where you're doing that. However, there's steps in place, which I'll touch on in a minute in terms of screening of your workforce to make sure that people don't come to work when they're sick is one of the main things that you can do to control that risk. So what do we expect businesses to do? So obviously we expect them to comply with national and state public health directions that I touched on before. Not only doing it, but businesses actually promoting physical distancing and hygiene measures. As I said, stay at home if you're sick, even if there is mild symptoms. So those hygiene measures, as Laura touched on, there's obviously cough etiquette and things like that to make sure that when you're trying to minimise the chances of any spread of any droplets. If there is any concerns about risks contracting Covid, and even more broadly, I guess one of my takeaway messages from today is that workers should raise that with your employer if you've got concerns about Covid or any other workplace health and safety risk. The first point of call is to talk to your employer. They will have plans and systems in place to deal with any concerns that you might have. But what's important to know is that even if, or you're not satisfied with that or you're not satisfied that that risk is being controlled, workers, members of the public and anyone else can come straight to Safe Work New South Wales. We have a website obviously, we've got a contact number of 131050 where people can ring and call us and report their concerns. And we do actually now have an app that's available through, I think both Android and iPhone as well as through our website. So people can anonymously just log on to the Speak Up app. You can submit photos, you can submit geographic location, you can remain anonymous. You don't need to put your details forward. Then that will come through to us for actually us to evaluate what our response might need to be in that situation. Also important obviously is to monitor the extent of Covid-19 in the community. We know at the moment that that's very, or very quite low, which is fantastic. However, that obviously that can change quite quickly. So we're obviously expecting that businesses and individuals keep up to date with the extent of Covid in the community and any advice that's coming out around Covid for your particular area. Again, I'm just mindful that Laura's covered a lot of this stuff, so I'll go through these ones quite quickly and I'll sort of aim for some time at the end. As I touched on, the most important things you can do, they really are quite simple, and that's that message that we want to keep consistent across the community. So your hygiene practices. So your hygiene practices, sneezing and coughing into a tissue and disposing of those. Washing hands frequently. So facilities and if they aren't there, obviously using alcohol-based sanitiser to to clean your hands and cough etiquette. The physical distancing, as everyone knows, maintaining that that one point five metres where you can. Workforce health screening. So that's what businesses can do before even people come on set. Is to see if people have had any symptoms, even if they're mild. And other things that might be in place just to screen before people even come on. If people aren't well or they're detected that there is any concerns, or you've been in a close contact with someone that's had COVID nineteen. Obviously, we'd expect that they wouldn't come to work and and they could be, you know, effectively turned away from the workplace from by the employer if he had some of those symptoms. Laura also touched on the COVID nineteen safety plan. So there is a whole range of those and we're we're working quite closely with health to to cover as many industries that we can. That's all through the newsouthwales.gov.au website, as Laura touched on, and those links will be provided. So what's Safe Work specifically done during the COVID nineteen response? We've got dedicated resources on our webpage around COVID in terms of what businesses can do. A lot of that content is also now on the newsouthwales.gov.au website. Some of you might have heard and seen some of the work that's come out of Safe Work Australia as a as a national body. So. Safe Work Australia doesn't regulate any of the the legislation. That's our role in New South Wales and my state counterparts do the same. However, we've tried to make sure that there is much as possible is the national consistency around the work, health and safety. Information and support that's available to workplaces. And then we've obviously worked very closely with union bodies and associations and other groups to to help them through any particular. Concerns that they might have or challenges that they might have to come back in. Not so much relevant probably for this group, but what we've done, like a lot of other government agencies, is waived temporarily a number of our fees around licensing. To try and sort of reduce the burden on on businesses at this at this stage. One thing that we get a lot of questions about is is working from home. One of the things, as Laura touched on, that you you can do and businesses can do, if it's not essential for people to be in a physical workplace. And where it's possible, we're still encouraging that people should work from home. What we've got on our website is some information to support that. And one of the questions that we do get is what's that mean if I'm working from home? And generally, workers are still covered under the Work Health and Safety Act if you are working from home. We expect employers would consult with their workers and any other relevant people, keep their workers up to date. Seek advice specific to their circumstances. And to make that easier, we've had some information on our on our website to download a working from home checklist. Because we know, and unfortunately we've already started to see it, that there has been some some reports in in terms of some increasing injuries at home. And a lot of those are what we call musculoskeletal disorders. So from inappropriate setup at the home, spending too much time. In a static posture, not moving around, or an inappropriate setup for your for your home computer. So. My background is as an occupational therapist. That's one of my areas of passion is around ergonomics. So we've put some information on our website to help people as they're working from home, just to give you some hints and tips in terms of making your workplace. Being your home, safe while you're working from home. Another thing that's come up quite a bit is what actually what to do. Well, this is mainly obviously for businesses, but. If a worker is suspected of having COVID nineteen. So obviously we'd expect that businesses ensure that those people stay away from the workplace and encourage them to seek more advice. If there is actually a confirmed COVID nineteen case at a workplace. But obviously ensure that they don't come to work while they're infectious and they've got to seek advice from the health authorities. Laura touched on it earlier in terms of what reporting obligations are. And as I said, New South Wales Health is the lead agency regarding COVID nineteen. However, what we expect is if if a worker has. Or work is attributable to someone contracting COVID nineteen. So. Someone has contracted the the virus while they've been at work. That's something that would would need to get reported to us at Safe Work New South Wales. Because what we'd like to do in working with health is just to make sure and see what systems that workplace has in place to manage a COVID nineteen situation. So there is a reporting requirement to that. As I said, that 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 response is proportionate, given the COVID nineteen pandemic. But we do investigate and have investigated some instances where there's been a workplace, confirmed workplace contraction of COVID nineteen. Some really simple steps and unfortunately that slide's a little bit busy, but this really gives you some key information in terms of what we expect someone should do if there's a suspected or a confirmed case. Obviously isolate that person, inform, so make the workplace aware and the other agencies aware through the the local health contacts. Transport them and clean, obviously clean the situation in the area that they've been in. Identify where you can, who's actually been at the workplace and who's had close contact with that infected person. As I said, clean again, making sure that's really important that there's been a thorough clean of that person area where they might have been. We'd expect that that businesses would then review what their risk management controls are for COVID nineteen. And actually review whether that work may need to change and what needs to happen to ensure that there is a lower risk of that happening again. And also keeping employees up to date in terms of what's happening. And really important and sometimes often forgotten, but I'm again really passionate about is what we call that recovery at work. So when someone is no longer infectious and they need to come back into the into the workforce. Keeping in contact with that worker through that situation to support them. And to encourage them when the time's right to to come back to work safely. So staying in touch is really important. Which is really important. Again, Laura touched on this in terms of the mental health impact around COVID nineteen. And we know that that's caused heightened anxiety and stress for workers and and generally everyone in the community. The risk around mental health or a mental health injury at work is real and and businesses do need to. Cover the risk or have systems in place to manage that risk around mental health in the workplace. So we've just quickly there put some actions that business can include. So manage the risks leading the change, connecting workers to the support that they have. And access mental health training. So I've included a link there to one of the New South Wales Government initiatives that's being let out of South Work. And that's mental health at work or what we're calling the mentally healthy workplaces. There's a whole range of free resources that are available on that website for individuals and for businesses. So if someone is looking for some information around mental health at work, particularly in a in a work setting, encourage people to to have a look at that website. So just in summary, before I hand it over for any any questions that we might have. The real key informations and the key key steps is review the resources available. There's a lot of resources. So newsouthwales.gov.au. Obviously the Safe Work website, New South Wales Health themselves. Safe Work Australia also, as I mentioned, has got a lot of industry information. Consulting with the workers. So any, the key thing, whether it's COVID or not, is that that businesses should be consulting with their workers about their concerns to help them. Come up with ways to control or eliminate any risks. As I said, review your control measures. Consider the COVID safe plans that are on the newsouthwales.gov.au website. So they are mandatory for some industries and recommended for others. Businesses really got to think about and plan how they might respond. If unfortunately there is a positive case of of COVID in your workplace, that's a really significant one. And plan how your business will will gradually scale up as the community recovers from the pandemic. So my details are available there. I'm happy for people to reach out to me either through thirteen ten fifty or directly on it on any of those details if you've got. Specific questions and I'll obviously do my best to 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 answer them. Or if not, we'll obviously get the right advice for you. And Grunia, I might hand it back to you now to see if there's any questions and I'm happy to to answer any questions that I can.
Thanks so much, Danny. We do have a few questions for you. First question, do businesses need to be accredited as COVID safe workplaces?
Yeah, good question. No, they don't, is is the short answer to that. So as as Laura touched on, so through the newsouthwales.gov.au website. Businesses can become what we call a COVID safe business. There's certain steps that they need to do to become COVID safe. Do they become accredited? No, they don't. But it's a way of businesses demonstrating to the public, to their workers and to anyone else that they have. Considered what they need to do to be COVID safe. They can be registered. And that's all available through the newsouthwales.gov.au website.
But not mandatory for for this sector at this point?
No, that's my understanding. Highly recommended, but and and that's again through New South Wales Health, through the public health orders stipulate that. So that's more of a question for health. Yep.
Okay. Now, this might be a health one too. When staff are unwell, are they required or just requested to stay home as per the health guidelines?
Yeah, I'm happy to have a go at that also, get Laura to answer that one. But in in terms of any any other risk, if someone is is unwell. They shouldn't be coming to a workplace. We know that even mild symptoms or people that are completely asymptomatic may be COVID positive. However, having said that, we know the community transmission is is very low at the moment. It's probably unlikely from a risk point of view. However, we say that people should not come to work if they have any symptoms.
Okay. I think Laura's coming back up in a second, so we might see if she's got anything to add. Hi Laura. I don't know whether you heard that question. When staff are unwell, are they required or just requested to stay to stay home?
If they're unwell, they're requested to stay home and also requested to go for COVID nineteen testing if they have any of the relevant symptoms.
Okay, thank you. Laura, another one for you. Do we need to get parental guidance or parental permission rather? About the use of sanitisers when working with children on set? So approval of the specific brand or that kind of thing?
No, you don't need the permission. In terms of the brand, I would just make sure that you're using an alcohol-based hand sanitizer. But the other thing to be aware of with children on set is we've heard anecdotally an increase in. Calls to the poisons line around children drinking the hand sanitisers. So just making sure it's either out of their reach or being monitored if you've got young children on set.
Thanks, Laura. Another question here, we've got a question about close contact for cast on set. So where they might come in, come within one point five metres during a scene. So not just maybe an intimate scene, but side-by-side action or a fight sequence or just, you know, actually just close together. If isolating cast beforehand isn't possible, what are the rules for breaking that one point five metres on screen?
Yeah, so obviously when you're filming a scene, if it's not practical for the whole scene to be filmed one point five metres apart, then that's fine. It's also the time that you spend near the person. So the one point five is a useful barrier. But it's the amount of time that you're with that person, either face-to-face or in the same room. So even keeping the one point five. If it's more than fifteen minutes sort of face-to-face type or side-by-side, then that's increasing that risk of transmission. And over two hours, so it's anyone in that room. So that would include camera crew. Anyone else in there is then also at an increased risk of transmission coronavirus. So all of those people, if that, if there is a case, would be considered close contacts and likely would need to isolate for fourteen days.
Okay, so if the if they know that they've got a scene coming up that's, you know, fifteen fifteen minutes or less is better than.
If they can shoot a scene in under fifteen minutes, then.
And then take, so take, you know, breaks outside and that kind of thing?
That's cumulative. So even if you're having breaks in between, it's still multiples of fifteen minutes. And as soon as that multiples hits around two hours, we know that really increases that risk of it and contracting COVID. So the breaks don't really change the risk factor. It's just the cumulative time that you spend with someone. So that's why it's so important if anyone does have symptoms or is unwell that they do not go into work because they're putting. Everyone else at work at risk of contracting COVID, but also at risk of having to go and isolate at home for two weeks, which is not fun.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Danny, this or this this might be one for you. Are there restrictions on the types of productions that can be shot at this stage of of restrictions? So based on location or crew or cast size? And are there any guidelines on when certain further, on when other restrictions restrictions might be lifted?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that one. So as Laura touched on before. Workplaces are generally exempt from from the public health orders that that we've talked about, which is obviously. People are getting used to that. Obviously we've moved from a where it was quite restrictive early on in terms of what people couldn't couldn't do. And obviously we're. Safely now opening things back up. Workplaces generally have already always been exempt where where it's really necessary to 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 do that sort of work. And we're really keeping that in line with, as we said before, if people just observed by those things that we know work. So. Maintaining that distance where they can, that good hand hygiene and staying away when you're sick. There's there's really no restrictions or 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 need to to do that. So. At this stage, if it is a workplace, then there is no restrictions on that. However, we we would expect businesses to have things in place to can control the risks, as I touched on. To make sure they're minimising the risk of of workers contracting. If there is unfortunate situation where you've got someone COVID positive that you're in contact with.
Thanks, Danny. We've got another question. What's best practice for crew members who are required to cross a state border to work?
Coming into New South Wales or leaving New South Wales? Which border?
That's a good question. It's not, Louise, do you want to jump in and tell us, are you coming in or going out? So let's let's have a look. If they were coming in, what would be best practice?
We've never closed the borders in New South Wales, so people have always been able to come across into New South Wales. At the moment, we know there's really just community transmission at any level happening. We know there's some in Sydney probably and there's some in Melbourne. So people coming from Melbourne, just being more aware of any symptoms and being extra cautious to stay home and stay away if they're unwell and go and get tested. But otherwise, it's, we've never had the borders closed and we've never had that requirement for two weeks isolation.
Okay, so just to treat them in the same way as as you would with any other worker. In terms of being alert to their kind of health issues or any symptoms or that kind of thing. Okay, terrific. Thank you. Here's an interesting one. So if as an individual, I brought friends together on a volunteer basis to shoot a film or something and nobody's getting paid. Have I effectively created a workplace or am I a public gathering?
Yeah, great question. I'm happy to to try and fill that one. So. It gets quite complicated with volunteers, but but generally volunteers, if you've got a volunteer or on. Involved in in something not like that, volunteers are generally covered by the work, health and safety. I'm not talking about from from the public health order perspective, but from a work, health and safety. You 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 become what we call a person, a P C B U or a person conducting a business or an undertaking. So generally there is, you know, goes into quite specifics. So that's probably getting to the nitty-gritty. I'm happy to take things offline if there's really specifics I can get some advice on. But generally speaking, volunteers. Work experience students, anyone that you bring in and even others. So I talked about before, members of the public. Obviously, if if there is a workplace, there is responsibilities on that person that's conducting that that workplace or conducting that work. So that does involve members of the public. So generally, there is a responsibility from a W H S perspective on that.
Okay, terrific. Now, Laura, we've got a follow-up for you about the cumulative time that you spoke about. Could you go into a bit more detail about that?
Yeah, so generally, if you do have a person that tests positive for COVID nineteen in the workplace. There'll be an investigative team and they'll contact you to discuss around who would be considered a close contact. So who has had enough exposure to be at a much higher risk of contracting COVID and should therefore isolate at home for two weeks. So a lot of that's going to be looking at when the person was infectious. So at the moment, we take it from forty-eight hours before symptom onset. So. Anyone that was close to that person. So we generally use the markers of fifteen minutes face-to-face or two hours in the same room. It's lower risk outdoors, but we generally keep those sort of. Times there, but it's cumulative. So it's over that infectious period. To determine who has had enough exposure to be considered at higher risk. And we think that there's a risk to the public. If they do not isolate for two weeks. So it is cumulative over that infectious period and we take it from forty-eight hours before the symptom onset as well.
So the the, how long is the infectious period that you're that you're talking about? Do we, do we know that difference?
Yeah, so it's a new virus. We're still learning a lot about it. The infectious period is generally from symptom onset until several days after. The infectious period is generally from symptom onset until several days after symptom recovery. So it can go for a couple of weeks, a bit longer, depends. So it's really important people do not continue to work while unwell because that just increases the number of people that come into close contact and then would need to isolate.
Okay, terrific. We've got another question. If a crew member is showing symptoms of COVID-19, does the film shoot need to close down until that crew member is tested positive or negative?
No, no, they don't. So at the moment, and coming into winter, we're going to see a huge amount of respiratory infections. So we've had 17,000 people tested today, 17,000 people tested yesterday. And we've got a very low percentage of that are actually testing positive for COVID-19. So statistically, the chance that it would be COVID-19 is low. We generally have very quick turnaround. So within about 24 hours, we'll know whether it is and we'll get in contact with you straight away to let you know what you need to do and shut down. But I think to close it down every time someone has respiratory symptoms is not practical and is probably going a bit overboard.
Okay, thank you.
And I think just to add, it goes back to that key message that we said before, anyone that's got any symptoms really shouldn't be coming to work. And if as soon as they have any work or, sorry, any symptoms that someone is noticing, they really, you know, probably should be going home. And they just shouldn't be at a workplace, whether it's a set or otherwise. If they've got any symptoms whatsoever, we understand that that's got impacts in terms of from a financial and a leave perspective, depending on your employment status unfortunately, but there obviously is things in place to try and, you know, we'd leave coverage to try and do that. And we really want people to to stay away if they've got any symptoms whatsoever, just to minimise those chances. Even though Laura said the likelihood and the probability at the moment is quite low, really that's the best control, just don't come to work if you've got any symptoms at all.
Terrific. Now that's all the questions we've got at the moment. Anybody got any more questions? Get in quickly because we're going to finish up. If not, if you think of something after we've, this is all finished, get in touch with us at Screen New South Wales and we'll do what we can to answer those questions. And that's about it. Thank you so much, Danny, from Safe Work New South Wales for that really great information and those resources that you've provided for us. Laura, thank you so much for your information too and that kind of clarity, especially around that. I know there's been a lot of confusion about the difference between a public gathering and a workplace. So it's great to get that kind of clarified. Actually, we've got something coming in. Pip wants to close with close contact or cast. Can we get, can we talk more about a practical guide? Again, this goes back really to your, what you were talking about in terms of the cumulative matters around people working closely together. Is there, is there a way, I mean, I know on Safe Work Australia's site that there was some, a way of stepping through what you need to do if people need to work closely together. I think it was more, the thing I was reading was more about the construction industry. So people lifting a piece of heavy equipment or needing to operate some machinery in close contact and how you might, what that might look like and what an employer might need to do to kind of step through those kinds of instances. If people are needing to kind of work closely together for cast, is there, is there a way that they can plan for that and write a protocol around some of that? Laura, maybe one for you or Danny, if you've got anything additional that you could add?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same principles for every workplace, construction, film crews, everywhere. It's really just trying to minimise that close contact as much as possible, but we acknowledge that there's going to be places where you can't. But as you can see, the more close contact that more people in your workplace come into with each other, the higher risk it is that there'll be transmission across the workplace and the higher risk that will also have a significant impact on your business. So it's really just having a look at your own work, your scheduling, what people are essential, what people could do things remotely or for a limited time and just really trying to minimise those risks as much as possible. But we recognise it's not possible to completely eliminate that risk in order to run your business.
Thank you. And one last thing. So if a COVID case is confirmed, do you recommend that a business then closes at that point? Or will they be contacted by health in terms of next steps and what they should do?
They will be contacted and we will talk through the risks with them and a plan and we will involve Safe Work as well. So it will not be them having to make all of these decisions by themselves. They'll be supported by both of us if there is a case in the workplace to make those decisions.
Terrific. Thank you so much. We've got lots of thanks in the chat box here saying thank you, very informative, great session and really useful. Thank you so much, Danny. Thank you Laura. Thanks to AI Media for providing our live captioning and thanks to everybody for tuning in this morning and providing the questions for our discussion. Get in touch if you've got any more questions. Get in touch if there's a topic you'd like another webinar about. We look forward to seeing you again next time. Thanks everyone.
Thank you.